Thank you. I hope you all had an opportunity to, well, there she is, there she is, still monitoring. Say congratulations to Olivia once again. We are so thrilled. What a, what a big difference this made. And so that having been said, we will move right to the town manager's communication.
Yes. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate it. I want to thank council for having faith in me. I'm very blessed and grateful to be in this position. I want to thank staff. They've been also very supportive and helpful, especially Wendy Terry. She's been doing minutes for me, so that has been a huge help. Then my family's here tonight, so I wouldn't be here without them. So, thank you all. I do, I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll give you all a few updates here. So last month, a big topic, and always a big topic, is dredging. We did get a bid advertised for dredging. We're supposed to receive bids by June 3rd. We're hoping to have three, otherwise we have to rebid. But if we get three, we can pick the, we can award the bid and start dredging as soon as possible. We are also working on obtaining an individual permit for dredging. That's from the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's for larger scale dredging. We plan to submit that application by July and hope to get the permit by January. That's where we are on that. We also put out ads for Morris Park improvements and for a belt press for the sludge management at the wastewater treatment plant. We hired Ms. Dana Bradley as our Parks Recreation and Lake Director, as Dean Givens is retiring very soon. And we also hired Ms. Diane, I might mess up her name here. Diane Deneau Duval for our Finance Administrative Support Specialist, so we are very happy to have both of them, and we are still seeking a clerk for right now. We had our first Arbor Day celebration, so I wanted to thank Rick Carpenter, Laura Creji, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works for their work on that event, and we hope to have that event moving forward each year. Also want to thank Public Safety and Public Services for their efforts during last week's weather. It was tough on them, but they, they got us through it, and I appreciate that. And then lastly, I wanted to, well, not lastly, I'm sorry. The cell tower is still in place, or still set to be constructed hopefully by July. That's the last day I heard. And then upcoming events, I was just going to go over those real quick. This is between now and the next regular meeting. We have the farmer, farmers markets on each Friday from four to seven o'clock. The boat and auto show this Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock. Our Memorial Day program is on the 27th, starting at nine o'clock. And the Lake Lure Olympia Lure of the Lake Swim Event is on June 8th, beginning at eight o'clock. And again, I just want to thank all staff. I appreciate them, and you can find the entire report in the meeting packet if you would like. And then for my second item, I just wanted to review actions taken at April's workshop, work session and action meeting. So, we approved the submitted, I'm sorry, submitted methodology for the trial bay road repair, with the understanding that the width of the road be changed on the plan to the original width of the road. That is repaired. The road is back open, so we are grateful for that. Authorization for the town manager to sign the lease agreement for 2654 Memorial Highway. Approval of Ruby Collins Amendment Four, and approval of Budget Amendment Number 371 for Mark Twain Drive Street Maintenance. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. We've accomplished quite a lot since last month. We'll move on then to our council liaison reports and comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Doster.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Zoning and Planning Board met April 16th. Couple of little small things on there. I think one of the bigger things that came to light was we are going to work on, if a contractor in town has an enforcement against him, and he comes to appeal it, and it has proved to be in his favor, then we will give him back his money. Because I don't know if you know, if you come to appeal something, you have to pay. And if you win now, you will be able to get your money back. That seemed to be a really good thing. Everybody thought that was a great idea. Other than that, that's pretty much it. Zoning and planning was pretty, pretty simple this month. Couple of things to discuss that may come up this evening involving Lake Lure Academy. The ABC Board met April 15th. Nothing new there. It is the ABC, so you guys know where it is. Restaurant business is picking up dramatically. As you might imagine, being, coming into the tourist season, so place seems to be steady. And, so be sure you go visit our ABC store. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Diorio.
Thank you, Mayor. The Lake Advisory Board did meet this month, tracking some significant activities that are going on in the lake. The Police Department did their annual training on the new lake use regulations. The things that they're looking at in particular this year is the non-motorized activity. Anticipated to be increased because there's no longer permitting for non-motorized. And there is a significant increase in, in activity with that. It's all good. It's kind of the buzz of around town and around the county, the tri-county area. People are coming to put their non-motorized on the lake, so we're watching that activity closely. A particular concern to the community brought up to our, our attention is right here to the entrance of the marina. And we're taking a look at buoy placement there, whether we can have kind of a traffic separation scheme there a little bit better, particularly if we're going to be doing dredging in that area, to make sure that we're, that we're safe. The other thing that we're looking at, Morgan Company had to build a temporary ramp over here in Morris Park to load the barges that are going over to the dam to do construction work. Well, that temporary ramp area on the roadside over here in Morris Park is a great area for additional access for the non-motorized watercraft coming to the area. So with the ABC being a primary spot, and this secondary spot over here, if we do a little bit of work and keep that ramp area, we can keep that congestion away from where the motorized boats are going into the water, and that'll help as well. So we're taking a look at all of that, and the police are monitoring, giving us reports on that activity. Along with that, the Lake Advisory Board went out on the water and took a look at every buoy on the lake. There are 92 of them. There's a lot of buoys on Lake Lure. And they're continuing to analyze the need and placement of those buoys, applying, for the first time really, a standard to where buoys should be placed. The end result of that will be a new buoy plan. That work is continuing. There are areas that we have kind of bunches of buoys that no one really quite knows how they got that way. We can spread those out. Really, the goal is, is to reinforce that buffer between a swimming area and non-motorized craft, from the motorized craft, all the way around the lake to keep us safe. The, that analysis will be presented by the Chairman of the Lake Advisory Board at the June Marine Commission for our review. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that. And that'll be relative cost savings too. We anticipate going from like 92, 94 buoys down to in the 60s somewhere, but better placed 60 buoys to get the effect that we want. And that concludes my report, Mayor. The Board of Adjustments did meet no significant trends to report. Thank you.
Mr. Proctor.
Parking Board met Thursday, May 2nd. There's going to be a Buffalo Creek Park Trail Work Day, the 23rd of this month, sponsored by the Rutherford Outdoor Coalition. June 22nd, there's going to be a Pollinator Celebration at the Flowering Bridge. And if you haven't noticed, the construction for their education building has already started. We did get a note from James Ledgerwood, the Superintendent of the Chimney Rock State Park, letting us know that the Eagle Rock parking area is now closed, and we don't know for how long, but there's some, I don't know if "use" is the right word, but there's some adjacent property owners have closed that road. Hopefully that'll be figured out soon. As always, there was a lot of volunteer hours last month, and we hope that continues.
Thank you. All right. Well, that's, once again, thank everyone who serves and leads those boards. They're such an integral part of what helps us know what's going on in the community, and allows us really to access all the expertise that there is in our community from, from the people who live here. So, thank you. We all know it's not just a once a month thing that you do. There's a lot of work that goes into it. We'll move on then to our next item, which is a presentation by Mr. Ford for our 24-25 budget.
Steve, if you just want to use the keyboard to change it.
Okay, that'll be fine. I'll review the budget information that we discussed last week in our special session, and then just come back and do a follow-up about some of the things you charged our staff with and everything. Let me just say from a staff perspective, real quick, before I get into the budget, that as a staff, we're very excited about Olivia being our leader and our manager. You know, the town manager at Town Hall can make or break a workday, and it's already so nice to, she's always been pleasant here, but it's nice for her to be the manager and for you to come in and work. And she's not a pushover. You know, she stays engaged with us every day, and she stays, keeps us focused and everything, but it's, it's good to be at the front porch of her career, and this is just the start of good things for her, and good things for Lake Lure. So, I'm just thankful for that tonight. Let me just be real quick, because I don't want to take everybody's time. So I'll just, I'll just kind of review what we discussed last week, just kind of give you revenues, expenses, and we'll talk, anything that you want to, me to focus on. Then I'll just tell you how we followed up, and then maybe some plans, how we, we're going to do, maybe how we can stay up, stay on this process for the next couple of weeks, and then hopefully finish it up soon. So. Oh, by the way, thanks for the support for Diane, for bringing Diane in. She's already, she already done the tax report, has already been real helpful to Olivia and everything, so that's great. All right. Budget process. Just want to remind everyone, remind council, that the budget that we're presenting is a very simplified budget. And this is just for the fact that with transitioned town managers, with the projects that we're looking at, and just, just how those projects are going, some of our funding sources, questions we have on our funding sources, it's a simplified budget being submitted, but it's one that we can review during the year. Especially, hopefully, we can make a very formal media review to revise priorities, look at the budget itself, how it's going, evaluate our revenues and earnings, and, but also, staff can bring monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly reports, and you can make decisions through inter-fund budget amendments, as well as using fund balance. But hopefully, we're not going to use much fund balance this year, if I have that off. Also, we have that procurement policy that keeps us in line, where we can review costs as the department heads make submissions. All right. Revenue, let me just give you kind of overview, and then we'll, we'll get a little more specific. Revenues are on a slight upswing. We discussed local revenues in terms of permit fees. Mike Williams Group does a great job in review process, so those, those things are up. On the state level, sales tax is much better over the last two or three years, and we'll keep an eye on that. Other revenues are pretty stable, but we're doing, we're doing okay state revenue-wise. So we've got a little bit of increase based on those, those performances of those revenues. For town employees, that's always important when we take care of our employees. We're looking at a market COLA-type consideration, 3.8%. And that's a combination of COLA, Christmas bonus, merit bonus payment. We're looking at some things about how we can do differently with our evaluations, comp time, which we will discuss maybe at a later time. Operating expenses increased slightly just because of inflation. Personnel, we're asking for three and a half employees, two in public services, one in community development, and then a seasonal employee for Parks and Rec. Debt service continues to decrease. We may want to revisit that with some things that we're talking about with vehicles and things like that, but that's, that's something that we can feel good about as we look at a fire engine purchase, which is a major need here with our fire department. Budget is balanced. That was Ms. Steuben's first statement, I think, to me. She said, "I just want to make sure the budget is balanced. All funds are so to revision though, as we go throughout this process." If you want me to skip over anything, or in light of the, the meeting tonight. Revenue highlights, I'll just show that one more time, so we can know where we are. You'll see that we're going to increase ad valorem vehicle taxes. $35 million in value increase for Lake Lure this year based on Rutherford County. They have not confirmed that, so we were still looking for that confirmation. Could be higher, could be lower, but $35 million of value has been added to our overall price value here in Lake Lure. State revenues, I think I hit that. Land use, so we're adding 100,000, 100,000 to that, I'm sorry, 32,000 to that. Miscellaneous revenues, we're able to increase that because of the Lake Lure, our, our property over where the old ABC building would operate. Now we have a new tenant, and we have rental income that's going to allow us to put that in our revenues. Water stays the same in terms of rates and things like that. Record funds, we're adjusting that down based on the fact that our, maybe, we'll just see how the lake performs this year in terms of power generation.
Steve, worth noting, as soon as you reduced that, it started raining.
That's the rain dance.
If you reduce it one more time, I think we'll get a gully washer.
Okay, yeah, there you go. That's good.
And I do appreciate the conservative approach that we talked about regarding that too. Very much so.
All right. This is just, just what I talked about. These were the statements that I made. We are monitoring boat permits. Just remember, we are not collecting fees for non-motorized boats or marine outfits, so that could, we want to keep an eye on that. Our slip fees are still doing well. We're doing better with commercial fees, things like that, so just, we want to keep an eye on that. Everything else, I think, I think is going pretty well. Okay, here is something, just blunt it into the expenditures. We increased every department's, departmental budget, operating budget for inflation. We also allowed for new positions to be placed in each department. We reduced the beach and the watershed and the dam based on the capital projects that are occurring there. So, there's an overall increase, but not, not enough to where we still can make overall decrease of 300, about 370,000. I'll give you just a brief overview about what departments are pretty much looking at. We are increasing for staging events, there's an increase for staging events in the town. We hopefully make, will enhance some of the Christmas events, some, some of the other events that occur throughout the year. We're looking at enhancing our contract services and our professional services, technology upgrades in administration of IT, uniforms, supplies in police, medical supplies, 30% increase in those costs of fire. In the fire department, we're looking at giving them, increase there. Sanitation, slight increase in tipping fees. Public Works, that's where the three employees, or I'm sorry, two employees are going, but also just the overall operating costs. They have a lot of operating pressures. Economic Development, Brading Island, Brading Line, that's where Laura Creji works with Commission and the whole town in it, as well as organizations outside within the town where they work on events together. Does a great job promoting the town. Community Development, one additional position there with Mike Williams Group. That could be argued that it's been mandated by the state. I think Mike has made that point. And so, but he's, he's done well adapting as much as he could, but he needs that additional position. A seasonal personnel parks, and then we've got some decreases in the beach and marina and the dam. And then our insurance, we might see a slight increase throughout the year on that. Is any question so far? Am I going up pace?
Perfect.
Good, okay. Just from a capital standpoint, let us come back to you. Let's put a pin in this, this vehicle conversation. We may want to come back to you on that, just to see how we make finance, what our relationship with Enterprise. As soon as we got out of the meeting, Ms. Steuben jumped on the issue with Enterprise. Not from a, you know, not from adversary or anything. She just wanted to see what's happening there, what the agreement, the nature of the agreement, the terms of the agreement, looking through those leases, and I'll let her speak for that, but she's done great, so I feel like with her leadership, we can make good decisions on Enterprise, and then come back to you. And hopefully, we'll have an answer by maybe even next week about work, in the work section on that. Parks and Rec and Public Works, large equipment, loan equipment that they'll need to replace and keep these real good. Water and sewer, this is the one that's easy on. We're keeping their rate same, and pretty much, public services who oversee, that, that umbrella comes under. They do well, keeping the operations controllable with the cost sewer operations as well. Very, does a really good job of capital outlay. We got slight debt in those, in that operation where hopefully that will be paid off within, one will be paid off in a year, and then another will be paid off in a matter of maybe three or four years, so doing well. What I would like to recognize is that we're bringing back in the 400,000 that council had intended. We got some details to work out on that with the Capital Reserve Fund and things like that, so we need to revisit that, but, and, you know, what, the way we've been reimbursed for some of the expenses that we fronted for the, for the sewer, those go back to the overall fund balance in the sewer fund, so we're, we're looking good.
Hey Steve, real quick.
Yeah, please.
The, and you may not know this, but if you, if it's available for you to figure out, can you have an idea how much we saved when we installed all those electric water meters with the, the art, you know, the, I'll call them blue toothed water meters?
Right. Well, from, I'll let Dean speak to that.
Now, you may not know off the top of your head, Dean.
From an operation standpoint, we went from three days of having three staff members, three members recording meter information to two hours now, one, one employee, two hours.
Right, yeah.
So just from that, from that expenditure.
Second year, we're responsible for Chimney Rock, so that cut down.
Yeah. Okay. I knew, I knew we'd cut it. I just, I didn't know if it was a dollar, but that's okay. That's enough.
Right, okay. And the meters do better recording the data. So, yeah, they're more accurate too. All right. Yeah, please stop me, I just want to go along. Electric fund, this goes back to what I just mentioned about where we just don't know what the lake, lake levels will be. You can't control the lake at all. This is more in line with what we're budgeting this year, 280,000. It looks more in line with what we have collected over the last couple of years. You know, we can, we can pray and hope that it could go back to 400,000, even 300,000 one day, but we'll just have to keep an eye on that. But, from an operation standpoint, public services, Dean Linsley's group, just like water and sewer, they do a great job keeping those expenditures down, keeping it in the black. Great job, so. Okay, and then we, we discussed this last week, fire engine, we're going to have to look at some, what we can do from a financing standpoint. With the simplified budget process that we are engaged, that we will engage in throughout fiscal year, hopefully on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, and then at that mid, mid-year mark, we can, you know, look at each capital item as opposed to putting a huge number in the budget, and then just let it sit there, and then have other capital issues come up throughout the year. I think I explained that, and hopefully you, yeah, have y'all's support on that. But, and hopefully, we'll use inter-fund transfer method, where we'll use our budget first. We'll see how we can spend this budget, reallocate money, then if we need to tap into fund balance, we can. Personnel costs, that's one thing we need to keep an eye on. Our staff's getting a little bit bigger, so we got, those are reoccurring costs as opposed to one-time costs, so we want to keep an eye on that. We don't want that to get, we don't want that to grow beyond of what we can, what our revenues are generating and how, how revenues are growing. Remember, we got three more years until another reappraisal. I know no one wants to hear about reappraisal, but, you know, we're, we're kind of locked into those values right now. One, one good thing that we, where there will be some potential, is the way we earn our interest. And we have talked to some financial analysts, and they said that that's a very untapped potential here at the town, and hopefully, we can come back to you maybe in a matter of weeks and show you that potential for rev, for interest income. Okay. So, this is just, I'm coming back to you. That's, that last slide is where we left some things. We went through a very detailed approach where I appreciate council, you being so engaged, going line by line and things like that. So, one was how we were calculating, I, I put a lump sum in one line item, and it looked, it looked, when you pointed it out, more than one councilman pointed it out, it did look like a big number, so we wanted to analyze that again. Let me just make sure you're aware. Remember, Ms. Steuben came in March, we had already been in a process with Mr. Perkins, so he had crafted some budget figures and things like that, then Olivia came back in, so this is, maybe this is a little bit of that, but also just some things that I need to probably correct on how I presented to you on this. But, right here, okay. You pointed out that we were 224,000, that, that related to the personnel expenses at 89,000, almost 90,000 for the community development. So how does that play out? Well, one, it was put in that lump sum, it was put in that one account, salaries account, just as a proposal, because then we didn't want to pull it out. If we did pull it out, then we wouldn't have to pull out all these accounts, all these expenses. We would just pull out that one figure, and then we would still have, and still our budget would, we would reflect what our actual spending was. So, if you look at this, we got a base salary for each employee that's going in public services, and one for going into community development, their retirement that the town has to pay, a portion of the retirement the town pays, the 401K match, the medical indile expense, and then payroll tax, payroll expenses, things like that. So, that comes up to 65,000 per employee for public services, 75 for community development. And we're, if you see something that's outstanding on this, that stands out, please let me know. You multiply that public services times two. This is the kicker, I think. This is where we kind of got, I think we got our wire problem. Below that personnel expense that related directly to the employees, we put in things, we put in expenses that relate to bringing that employee on and allowing them to function here. Vehicles for public services. We may want, we may want to have an additional vehicle for two additional staff members. And then also their equipment, you know, on a outdoor computer, the, the commuter tablets that they use, other type of equipment that they'll, that's the necessary. We'll determine those with community development. Mike Williams does great with his budget. And so, I think he can absorb some of the cost, but we, you know, we may need to revisit him when he, he finally determines how his, his staff will, how, how they'll share resources and, and equipment. Vehicles, that may be something that we need to come back to Mike with, because, you know, he's going to have two staff members, as well as himself, going out and inspecting and doing follow-ups, so. And then, and then included in that, in that big number was that the current staff COLAs certification upgrades. Public services has significant numbers of certification upgrades that they, that they're required. Public services has significant numbers of certification upgrades that they, that they're required by law to put in the, to expense out because of just state regulations and things like that. Does that make it clear why that number was so big?
I don't, I, yeah, I don't think public services asked for a vehicle for their new employee, did they? No.
No.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, okay, well, town manager during the.
Okay, okay, I'm just, yeah.
They said, well, okay, if we're going to bring another staff of two, another crew of two, we may need another vehicle.
Okay.
But it may not, you know, we may not.
But, but you've got that factor.
We got that factor in, we can pull it out. Or, you know, when we start talking about Mike's, that, that might come into play there.
Okay.
Or it might just come in where we can off-share another vehicle, town-wise, so.
But, but Steve, you're going to get answers to those questions before we go to the final budget, right? You're not going to budget it in like that, are you?
I, I can pull it, I can have that flexibility to pull it out. It's in the budget because it's a budget, it's in the budget and it balances with the revenues we got.
Yeah.
But we can take any, we can take, oh, you're talking about making it a personnel expense?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, definitely, sir. Yeah, I'll make it more, I'll put it in the capital item. We can, we can vote on this capital.
Okay.
Yeah, I follow the government, let's see where you go. All right, so. Last week, you, you as a council brought up, and I think this was, we still have others that we're still looking at and evaluating, but you cut the budget for almost 2,000 last week just by number crunching, doing some analysis, doing some critical thinking. That number will grow hopefully, as we look at some other comments that you made last week. But, you know, it's been less than a week, so just give us a little bit more time just to verify some of the things that you wanted us to analyze and everything. We are looking at verified debt service amounts because if Enterprise goes away, we may have to go back to that traditional way we have always. But that's a good thing because we can up, we bring in those proceeds, so it balances out on the budget. So we're not having, we'll have to look for trade-off of those revenues. But just remember our bottom debt, following up with Enterprise.
Steve, just one correction on that, it's not a fireboat purchase, it's a fireboat rehabilitation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's different, because we got the two engines coming in from the insurance claim and that's just to augment the final refurbishment to get the fireboat up to speed.
Okay, okay.
I didn't, I didn't want, I didn't want folks to think we're buying a new fireboat.
Okay, right, okay.
A new fire engine, hopefully, but not a new fireboat.
Okay, and I appreciate your clarification about that. Rapid confirmation, Olivia is discussing some, are evaluating some things that have, that we've heard from the county through some of their public meetings and things like that. We need to confirm some revenues, maybe not this year, but next year and how we need to plan for those. We need, we need to confirm this about the property tax, about do we have $35 million mixture of baggage, freight baggage.
Okay.
And so things like that, so if you can just give us some time. Like I said, there's a staff changeover with the revenue department there, so it's hard for us to communicate quickly. That's it, I'm sorry. I thought I had no more shit.
Well, thank you so much, and to all, all the staff and all the department heads, it's been great. We really have gotten a much better handle on preparing the budget earlier in the year than we did last year, which is very helpful to us because we have more time to consider it as we go along, so we appreciate that.
Right, and I, and I will confirm about the vehicles and any other directives, anything else?
Yeah, we, we will be discussing the budget again on next week's work session.
Right.
That's May 22nd.
Yeah.
We hope to have more of those questions answered by then. Tonight, I do have agenda item to set the public hearing for the regular June meeting. We do not have to do that as long as it's, it's adopted by July 1st, but I'll leave that up to y'all.
Right, and the comp time, we'll have HR about comp time, retirement, things like that.
Perfect, thank you so much, Steve. All right, we will move on then to public comment. There was no one who signed up. If anyone who came in after the sheet was picked up would like to make a public comment, you are welcome to. We are always happy to have public comments. If not, then thank you all for coming. It makes the meeting much more interesting than if you're looking out and there's no one sitting at the table, so I guarantee you that. So we'll move on then to our consent agenda. Having an opportunity to review the consent agenda, do I hear a motion to accept?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the consent agenda stands approved as presented. We have no unfinished business, we are very good at last month's meeting. We'll move on then to new business, A, Resolution Number 24-05-14, requiring town council approval of project change orders exceeding $50,000, and I'll defer to you, Olivia.
Yeah, so we've, we've discussed this in the past couple of meetings, you know, just to give more transparency and more discretion to council for our project change orders. They set an original contingency amount, but we were, we were thinking, you know, above a certain amount, they approve it even within that contingency. So I have drafted this resolution to make that number 50,000 and above, y'all have the discretion to approve that. And that's pretty much that one.
All right. I don't know how it got out of order.
Yeah, it's under new business.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, all right, so do I hear then?
Madam.
A motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 24-05-14, requiring town council approval of project change orders exceeding 50,000.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right then, Resolution Number 24-05-14, requiring town council approval of project changes orders exceeding $50,000 is approved unanimously. Move on then to item B, consider approval of amendment to the land use fee schedule and lake use fee schedule to include language regarding a refund to the fee for filing an appeal is successful. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Williams?
There's not a whole lot. When we had, excuse me, when we had the March zoning planning board, we hosted a contractor forum, had a lot of good discussion. One of the things that came up though was, there was a perception that we made it difficult for, for anybody to disagree with a staff decision and difficult to file an appeal. And as we were exploring that, we realized, I realized, that, you know, we have a, I knew we had a pretty good fee for that, but if you, if you're successful in filing that appeal, it's cost you that money. And there was concern, I assumed that we would probably refund it. And I think would be a good practice, a lot of places do, and so that's the proposal that we made. You know, we don't want people just filing frivolous appeals just for the sake of filing, but if they are successful, that the fee would be refunded.
You said that way better than I did.
Yeah.
Sounds reasonable, I was going to say.
Mike, just offhand, do you know the percentage that are typically approved versus not approved?
We really don't have many appeals that go through.
Yeah.
And it's been about 50/50.
Okay.
All right, any questions, any more questions for Mike? Do I hear a motion then?
I make a motion to consider approval of amendment to the land use fee schedule and the lake use fee schedule to include language regarding a refund to the fee for filing an appeal if successful.
I just have a clarification on the, on the motion you want to approve, right?
Yes, I'm not saying that.
You said consider.
Yeah, we're voting on approval, I'll, I'll second that, Jim.
Jim had already said.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Then, the board unanimously has approved the amendment to the land use fee schedule and lake use fee schedule to include language requiring a refund to the fee for filing an appeal is successful. Move on then to C, Resolution Number 24-05-14A, setting a public hearing for June 11th, 2024, to receive comments regarding recommended text amendments to code ordinances, chapter four, animals, section four, dash three. I'll hand that to you, Olivia.
That'll be Mr. Williams as well.
Well, when I look out at the audience.
I know.
I wouldn't mind handing it back over to Olivia maybe, but I think, I think they're really going to be happy with this. There was a proposal that we amend the livestock for the animal ordinance that prohibits livestock in the town. We already went through this with chickens and that was, you know, we, we, we got through that. And, but the livestock for goats was suggested at the school and for educational purposes. And we've talked about it, we've, actually staff made a recommendation to the zoning and planning board that it, it seemed to be a good fit for public schools, you know, not, not a, not, nothing but a public school. I've already had a couple of calls saying, I hear that we're going to have goats in neighborhoods. It's not a change to that, it's only in public schools for educational purposes. And we'd still, we're recommending still having a buffer and there's plenty of room over there at the public school we have now to have, to meet the 200-foot buffer. So we feel like it's a good, it's a, it's a good support for the school and so it's a good move for the community.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to have a, well, Resolution Number 24-05-14A, setting public hearing for June 11th to receive comments regarding recommended text amendments to code ordinances, chapter four, section four, dash three.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Resolution Number 24. Dash 05, dash 14A, setting a public hearing for June 11th, passes unanimously. We'll then move on to D, Resolution Number 24-05-14B, setting public hearing for June 11th to receive comments regarding proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Would you like to entertain that one?
Yes, like I said before, we'll be talking more about the budget next week at the work session. We can set public hearings if need be, so I recommend that we do try to hold the public hearing at the regular meeting in June, but I will leave that up to y'all.
That's a motion.
I think. I think it'd be good to go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 24-05-14 Bravo, setting public hearing date of June 11th, 2024, to receive comments regarding proposed fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget.
Thank you, I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-05-14B, setting public hearing for June 11th, 2024, to receive comments regarding proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, passes unanimously. We'll move on then to request for town council approval to resand the existing private beach located at 230 Burnt Ridge Road.
Yeah, the, the next three items are the same thing, just for different private beaches. I'll, I can speak to a little, if you want to add anything, Mike, that's fine. We've done this in the past, the Army Corps of Engineers has allowed us to allow freestanding beaches to a minimal impact, but town council has to approve those.
It's just these three that we typically do, right? And the.
And not ours at Rumbly Ball Arena.
We're not adding anymore, we don't do anymore, these are.
We do not allow adding any more beaches, just resanding the existing ones.
Grandfathered? Now, these were not done last year. Last year. But they're ones, what we're doing is we're going through and if it's an existing beach, if we've got, if we can see it on the maps, if we can foresee it on the, the historical photographs, if we have record of it, then we've, then we will consider allowing it. And it's supposed to be minimal and that's what we agreed with, with the Army Corps for.
Mike, just one question, we had talked before about getting a approved list of beaches, a consolidated approved list. If one is to be added, we can approve that to add to the list, or if one needs to come out, we could do that too. And then that would be transferred to you to be able to resand. What, what, the way we are right now, it's a little awkward, right? Because people have to come to us, so it's a timing issue to get approval, which may interfere with the better timing of resanding these beaches. So my question is, shouldn't we go to a standardized list so that you, we can delegate that authority to you guys to move forward?
We can do that, I, I've got a, pretty much a list.
Okay.
That I can present that to, you can vote on that.
Yeah, we'll do a one tempo, approved list.
And then if there was anything that comes up, I mean, there's been, one of these, I didn't realize they had anything, but when we go back and look, you can see there's been a beach.
Okay.
It's, it's clear there's been a beach.
Yeah, so that way we don't have to do this every single year.
Yeah, right.
You have your list and.
Right.
Kind of like we did with the skulls.
I agree with that, but the, this first one is talking about 10 yards of sand. Usually it's two or three or maybe five yards, and this one is a lot of sand.
It's a lot of sand.
It's a broader beach.
That's a truck, that's a.
It's a truck.
Yeah.
My half a truck, half an 18, yeah.
Anyway.
And it is, and it's a large, it's, that's, and I, I was trying to be organized and I separate out the files I just used and left them on my chair, but accidentally left the file I'm using now that has those beaches on it, on my chair. But it's, it's just a large beach.
Yeah, and to that point from Proctor D'Orio, if we do this list, I wonder if we do set a parameter by maximum that can be allowed by blanket approval, so that if you do have something larger like that, it can get a little more discretion before it, before they begin, you know, re, resanding their beaches, just at a certain level.
Yeah, and we, we can do that and that's one, the thing, the biggest thing we're dealing with it is to just encourage, to, to point out that it needs to be the minimal amount.
Yeah.
And it needs to be as infrequent as possible. And I've gotten, you know, to that, to that end, working with Rumbling Balls again this year. I mean, they've done a really good job about it and, and kept it, you know, kept it in control. And then actually at the town beach, there was no sand at it, it was just.
I was going to ask you that.
Back up, yeah.
Are there any of these, and I realize some of these places are probably sitting like this and it may not be practical, but some of these places can, can they not reclaim a little bit? I mean, in other words, encourage that before we go adding new.
Yeah, and, and we'd had that, but none of these are doing that, because it's too late to do that anyway.
I get it, this time around, but I mean, next time.
Last year, that's.
In other words, if you could get down in there to do that, you should do that first. Because just like the beach, we, we didn't put any, not one piece of brand-new sand on the, on the beach down there, so. Okay. I mean, the goal with dredging is we don't want to take it back out again, right? That stuff ends up in the main channel and all, all we do is a vicious cycle, taking it out.
We can't do these all three at once. No, I think so. I can start us off.
Willie may have a, a technical question on our agenda. Can, can, can I make a, a motion to approve all three in one motion?
That's what I just asked.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
I don't know of a reason.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve line items E, F, and G on our agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And items E, F, and G are unanimously approved.
Can I say something?
You may indeed.
I want to go back to item C about the livestock. I encourage you all to come to that public hearing so that you truly understand what the school is asking for. I don't want, it, it's very easy for things to get around out here where people are saying, just like Michael said, oh, Lord, we're going to have goats everywhere. That's not what's going to happen and I think it's important for you to understand what planning and zoning did, how they looked at this, how long it took them to come to these conclusions, so that you understand that it is for the school for specific reasons and that's it. And so I encourage, tell your friends to come to that meeting if you want to, so you can hear exactly what it's all about. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I meant to say that.
All right, we will move to our last item on the agenda then, the budget amendment number 372 for a public works excavator, and that is either Mr. Ford or Mr. Linsley, take your pick or both of you. Whoever wants to defend it.
You're tired of coming up here.
There you go, that works.
Yeah, he gets a backhoe.
Yeah, that's right.
Did we get insurance on?
The reason we're asking for this excavator is, part A is because it was damaged during one of the storms. We did get turned into insurance, it's got a long lead time for the repair, but we still plan on using it once it's repaired. But the other excavator will assist us to have the two crews going and whenever we're doing the ditches, roadwork and everything, it won't be limited to, one has the excavator, the other one can't be doing the same thing on the other side of town. But it is just a, one we're requesting is just one size bigger.
Well, just, I was just curious, the brand and size?
The brand was the, we can get into the Sourcewell contract, we were asking for a Kubota D40, I believe it is.
Okay.
That, that's a state contract that does.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it's through, well, it's through Sourcewell. Yes, it's through, uh, well, it's through Sourcewell, but through Kubota of Asheville.
Yeah.
And, uh, but we wanted to keep it small so we can still use our, we're getting a trailer as part of our equipment purchase, so it can haul around our skid steer, we didn't have one big enough to move our skid steer around. So this trailer will be, we'll have two trailers, two excavators, and a skid steer.
I think, I think Dean, it's worth noting that for years, the culverts, the ditches, been neglected, neglected, or we just, for whatever reason, never got around to it, causing great problems throughout town, and those ditches overflow, they create erosion, they take out roads, they take out culverts, they take out personal property. So I appreciate your team staying ahead of it, doing what they could with the old excavator. Now with a person, extra, an extra team actually going forward, do you think you can make a more significant impact on those culverts, staying, staying ahead, particularly since some of these storms that we're getting seem to be?
Yes, every time we have a storm, we're out there basically resetting everything.
Yeah.
It's, uh, doing that is nothing, you can just do it and salute it and do it again five months later. After every storm, we have to be out there.
Start over.
Uh, we make it part of our routine, it's just after a grand event, we're out there checking it, and it's nice, the, the town, they notice what they're doing, they comment on the guys being out there, so that makes us feel good.
So if, if, if people have a, a issue with a covert, they call in, they get a work order for you, you get that on the list and you, and you can go after it fairly quickly?
Okay, you can actually do it on the town's website.
On the website, the work order.
You can submit a, a work order for most anything.
They're pretty good at finding the people without.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, with the addition of the GIS, we are wanting to, we're gonna map out all of our culverts, so we'll have it on a, on a map for our work order system. And the next big thing is, is these, uh, pipes under the road, the culverts, doesn't, it's, almost all the time we're finding ones that, oh, this has been buried for years.
Yeah.
So we're down there digging it up, jetting it out, cleaning it up, putting it back in service, and putting it on our routes to maintain.
Yeah, it's important, so I appreciate you doing that.
Any good questions?
I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment three seventy-two for public works excavator.
I'll second the motion.
And I get to operate it when you get it.
Yes, yeah, we need a test for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And budget amendment three, number three seventy-two for public works excavator is approved unanimously. And, thank you all for coming, as they say, having no more items on our agenda, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Um, Madam Mayor, I so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.